Alrighty, well, the computer there says it's four thirty. So when we call this meeting to order, and Angie could please call the roll?
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Bunty.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here from Naples, Florida.
And Commissioner Lumberman may be joining us later.
Alrighty, George, can you give us a prayer tonight?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us in this harvest season, Father. We just pray that the farmers would have good weather and that their crops would be more than sufficient. We ask, Father, you be with us tonight through our deliberations so that we could do the best we can for the folks of Grashaw County. For it's the name we pray, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Alright, we do have some changes to the agenda. We're taking under a new business. We're taking off Bernie Barnes on number three and replacing it with Chris from Michigan Works. And then, George, I think you had something you wanted to add.
Yeah, on the whole business, I'd like to talk about the Ithaca lead pipe situation.
Okay, very good. Anyone have anything else? I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make motion we approve the agenda.
Motion by Bailey, support by, or as motion by Bunty, support by Bailey. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, posnay? We have an agenda. Okay. Brief public comment. Anyone like to make some comment that's in the room? Or if you're online, please unmute yourself. If you're on a cellphone, I believe it's star six. Matt, you see anybody online that might?
I do see one name I'm not completely familiar with, the Sarrelis Jacobs, but I'm not seeing them on mute, so I don't think that they're.
Okay. If anyone online would like to address the commission, please unmute yourself. Okay, very good, let's move on. To the consent calendar. Anyone want to remove anything?
I'd remove the consent calendar.
Motion by Bailey to approve. We'll have a second. A second by Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, posnay? Motion passed. Okay. So. Tracy, I believe you're up.
Hello, everyone. A few words on buildings and grounds projects. We are still waiting for completion of the roof project. You'll still see we have the great big machinery in the lift out there. They're, they're getting there. Fortunately, the weather has been holding and cooperating with us. Once again, this is taking much longer than had been expected. But we're nearing the end at this point. Turning attention now to carpeting and painting. I've reported you previously that we've put together an annual cyclical kind of schedule for carpeting and painting. It was a schedule that staff created earlier this year. It was presented to you along with the capital improvement plan. Work is underway on projects for the year. We're beginning to collect some quotes for those projects. I know that Veteran Services is on that list and maybe the Juvenile Office. I've forgotten what the top two or three are this year. But that work is underway. Also mold, you can't ever seem to get away with that, particularly in old buildings. But there was concern about unsafe levels of mold in the district court staff work areas. This followed the discovery of a leaking pipe in the basement and the general conditions in this basement and any other. These environments tend to be moist, lack air circulation, which is it's just like a carnival every day for mold. We brought in a vendor, My Pure Environment, out of Frankenmuth, to do testing in the basement areas and throughout the district court spaces. This included the judges' chambers, the staff work spaces, and the break room. Unfortunately, the presence of mold, there's always some mold in our environment, but it was at safe levels. The vendor did recommend that we deal with a couple of areas in the basement. They're not a big problem now, but he said they will be, so we want to get on top of that. And Caitlin is looking into vendors that might be able to take care of this. I told her that Commissioner Smith in particular has asked that we try to work with the same vendor that we worked with over in the north annex. Okay, just kidding, but I do anticipate your question. No, we do not intend to solicit a quote from that company again. So, other news. Sheila arranged for our health department folks to come and do flu shots for us yesterday. It's always a great convenience. It helps us all to stay well throughout particularly those winter months. We had about thirty staff take advantage of that opportunity, including yours truly. So, big thanks to Sheila, but also all of those who stepped up to take a needle in the arm in the interest of their health and that of their coworkers. And as always, what is an administrator's report without some reference to discussions with DTE on our wind turbine tax litigation? The discussions are continuing in an effort to resolve these cases. DTE issued the first proposal, settlement proposal. The MREC negotiating team offered a counter. And DTE has prepared and will soon be issuing to us, soon, they have promised, the issuing to us their counter. I continue to think that everyone is showing up and negotiating in good faith, so that's a positive thing. But because there is no agreement, we are not stopping. We're pushing ahead on all the other avenues. Our appellate brief is due this week, so the board has voted to go ahead and file that simply because if we miss this deadline, we won't have a chance to file a brief in the future. So, we simply need to do that. Also, we're working at getting a hearing in the House on the bill introduced by Representative Pat Altman. So, things are moving. It seems quiet, but things actually are moving on each of the paths. And I will keep you posted on developments. Beyond that, we've got everybody just kind of doing what they do. I do have some, a handful of department reports attached in your meeting packet this week as usual, as, as I do on the second meeting of the month. And that is all I have.
Alrighty, any questions for Tracy? Thank you very much. Let's move on to commissioners' reports, George.
I had Commission on Aging meeting. Things are going well there. We had some discussion about, we have new aluminum ramps. And they're much easier to put up and take down, and so that should save us a lot. We had a grant to get that. I think there was ten of, ten different ramps, but they can put them in different configurations. And because of that, and we're going to be moving them around a lot, we, the question was asked about liability insurance for people that are using those ramps because they don't belong to them. They actually belong to Commission on Aging. They don't rent them or anything. And so, Jen Cook, Administrator, looked into that, and she has got a policy written up. It was reviewed by Tracy, and I believe it's sent off to Stokkers for review. And so that'll come back, and then that'll all be taken care of, so it'll be covered on the ramps. Mental health, we had a meeting there. Everything is going fairly well there. We're still deeply concerned about the Senate bill, it escapes me right now, but that would privatize and give a lot of the efforts, monetary efforts, be overseen by private insurance companies. Obviously, we're not for that. Mental health system in Michigan is doing quite well, using the money, money's wisely. And so we would be against that. In fact, county commissioners, we had a resolution here not so long ago that was sent on to the state. And basically it.
Alrighty, thank you, George. Only thing I have, if anybody is interested, the Citizens Initiative on putting some sensible voting rules back in effect for this upcoming election, if you're interested, I have them. Jan?
Okay, I attended a meeting with Michigan Works, and they're with us this evening. And I also attended a meeting at Resurrection Life Church. I'm not sure what they called it, but I went because our sheriff and undersheriff was going. I just wanted to say how great this meeting turned out to be. I was very fascinated to see both guys and how well they work together and how concerned they are about our county. And I was just really proud to sit there and know that we have such great law enforcement. And they both did a wonderful job explaining, telling about themselves, explaining things that were going on in the county. And even put a little humor in it, and put away with people really liking our sheriff and our undersheriff. So I just wanted to spread that word with you today, too.
I can add a little bit on that, Jan. That organization is a group called We the County. It's organized in all eighty-three counties of the state of Michigan and a thousand counties nationwide. Very active grassroots group. There's a lot of activity from the citizens that is going on right now. Sam?
Yes, I met with Newark and North Shade last week. Really not a lot going on in their townships right now. They're just wrapping some stuff up for the winter, trying to get some roads taken care of. Both of them are. The tower stuff's going well in, in New Haven. They seem to be getting along. I think they're going to get ready to put in a few more over there. The folks were there from the other company coming in. They were there. Fred, his first name is Fred, I know, but anyway, they're doing, they met with them guys. Oh, there's Fred right there, yeah. So, they met with those guys, and so I think that's moving right along over there, and they're kind of moving along the southern part of the county. I did talk to him about, as you know, I, last meeting, I had some concerns about our, our AR funding money there we got. And I did talk to both those townships about it, you know. I still believe that they ought to take a look at getting that out to everybody who needs some of it. There's some there, be able to use it, and then we'll use it someplace else. That's kind of my thought on that, but I did talk to him about that, so. That's about it.
Alrighty, thanks, Sam. Let's move on to new business then. Next up, District Court, Judge McDonald and Jennifer.
All right, I'll take a shot at this instead of putting Jennifer on the hot seat. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody. We're, at least in my mind, we're not here very often from the court system. We are, we're usually asking the board something, and I recognize that. So before I make this request today on behalf of the District Court, I'd like to express some appreciation to the board, to our county administrator and her staff. As we all know, for the last twenty-some months, everyone working in law enforcement in the court system, of course, is suffering from COVID fatigue. And I know everyone else in county government is more than feeling that same overwhelming feeling of fatigue. I'd like to congratulate our county board and our court administrator, Tracy Cordes, and her entire staff, Chris Osterhoff, and Sheila, and all of her staff for their strong leadership and helping us, the court system, and the entire county system navigate through the last twenty months of chaos. I can say on behalf of the entire court system that we firmly believe that everyone within our system and within the county system has been treated very fairly by the board and by county administration. We've all benefited from your hard work through difficult times, and we do appreciate that. It's not over, but there's light at the end of the tunnel. Tracy's promised us that. And we're holner to it. I also want to give another special thanks to Tracy and to Chris Osterhoff and to Sheila Barnaby for meeting with Jennifer and I and providing us with the necessary information and giving us some good direction and guidance on the issue that we're asking the board to consider tonight. Their, their input is very appreciated. So let me be succinct. We're asking for two things from the board today. We're asking that you authorize the reclassification of our current deputy district court administrator position on the department head salary schedule from a pay grade three to a new reclassified district court administrator position at a pay grade four. That would be the first authorization. This would bring the district court administrator position as revised fully in line with the current clinical director slash deputy juvenile court administrator position at a pay grade four. So they'd both be consistent at a pay grade four. The next request I'd have would be that the board grant us the authority to fill the new position anywhere within the range of the salary schedule at the grade four from step one through step six. I would just remind the board that this authority was previously requested and granted by the board to our prosecutor Keith Cushion for his most recent hiring of his assistant prosecutor. For a little background, our former deputy district court administrator Denny Avon retired in April of this year, 2021. His salary at the time he retired was sixty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars annually. Denny had been in that position with us from January of 2018 until his retirement in April of 2021. So he was with us about three years and four months. The cost of the classification change has been calculated by Sheila Barnaby, our HR officer, and we appreciate that. Sheila indicated that the, with Denny's vacancy for the balance of the fiscal year, the sum of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars was saved because it wasn't expended in salary because the position has been vacant. And my staff and Jennifer have been stepping up and helping, but that's a short-range solution to a long-range problem and can't continue. The salary plus benefits have been calculated by Sheila, and they're listed at grade three, step one, salary and benefits. And of course, that was considered the cost of benefits with full family health care at eighty-three thousand, four twenty-six. And at grade four, step one, that would go up to eighty-eight thousand, six thirty. The current grade three, step six salary, which would be the highest step with full benefits, would be calculated at ninety-seven, seven oh seven annually. And the grade four, step six at the top would be one oh four, oh forty-six. And as Sheila pointed out, again, that's with the cost of full family health care. So the cost, cost to change the classification if hired at a step one would be fifty-two hundred and four dollars annually. The cost to change the classification if hired at a step six would be sixty-three hundred and thirty-nine dollars annually. So, based on Sheila's numbers, the way I look at it, the additional cost at the highest step six would be covered for approximately two and a half years from the salary savings from the unexpended salary this past fiscal year. And at step one, it would cover an approximate three-point-two years with the savings without spending, expending additional money, which would, of course, be expended going forward. Tracy reminded me, and so correct me, Tracy, if I'm wrong, but when the, I think it was McNulty study, when that was done of the fourteen positions that are in this department head salary schedule, when that was done and classified, it's our position that it was properly done at the time with Denny's functions being, being studied and classified the way that that deputy district court administrator's position was set up under Jennifer Wood. However, the new revised district court administrator position encompasses more direct personnel supervisory responsibilities. It includes additional state reporting and compliance requirements through the State Court Administrative Office, the Michigan Secretary of State, and the Michigan State Police lien responsibilities. Finally, the recent criminal justice reform legislation, which was passed by the state of Michigan, is now fully implemented as of October one, has imposed substantial additional administrative and reporting requirements on all district courts, in all courts, in all law enforcement. And the sheriff could, of course, speak to it. It's also imposed those additional responsibilities on the prosecutor's office. We were recently advised by the Michigan Supreme Court, effective, well, actually, I was advised on September twenty-ninth, 2021, that the entire court system in the Twenty-Ninth Circuit for Clinton and Grashaw Counties, include all the circuit courts, district court, and juvenile courts, were going to be comprehensively audited, which occurs about once every ten years. The last audit was performed in 2012. We were fine. Angie Ballard was our court administrator then, and she was able to guide us through that audit. I don't believe Tracy was here ten years ago. Would have been better off if she was, but she'll be here through this one. I did speak with the financial director of the Michigan Supreme Court. Her name is Renate Kemper, or Renati, I'm sorry. R E N A T E. I was at Renati Kemper. And she advised her, that our court, she was advised that our court does not have a current full-time administrator. She was gracious enough to indicate to me that because they have some flexibility, she was going to try to schedule our audit into September, or excuse me, into spring of 2022, which will give us some time for a new administrator to get up and onboard before we're audited by the Supreme Court. That's a comprehensive financial audit and a file audit. So they, they have auditors onboard and spend about a week with us. The last twenty months have shown us several things, of course, but I think of most importance is that our revenues have been significantly depressed by a combination of things. Most significantly was COVID over the last twenty months. And the sheriff can speak, certainly speak to this, but with the COVID restrictions, with the extra precautions we were taking not to lodge people, not to pursue more minor violations, law enforcement activity in terms of the kind of violations that directly impact district court revenue was down. I'm not casting any aspersions on the Sheriff's Department. They're the department that really fills the bill from a void we have with the Michigan State Police right now. So, and they've been doing a wonderful job, but they were spread razor-thin and have been through COVID, especially in the jails. So we've been working as closely as possible to keep jail population down to avoid a bigger public health problem as far as COVID is concerned. And so, going forward, I can't promise you, but I am cautiously optimistic that our revenues will rebound and they'll improve, especially related to increased law enforcement activity. I think that's most especially true if we have a strong full-time district court administrator to prioritize our court operations and our financial collections. With increased revenue and collection efforts, we should more than be able to absorb the additional annual costs of the new hire if it's reclassified, especially with the approximate two-and-a-half-year cushion from the current salary savings that'll allow us to move forward over those next two-and-a-half years. I noted with some interest, and I think it's important to note here, that our human resource officers' report, monthly report that's in the packets for September, showed ten vacancies for county employment. And I've been here since January of 2009, so this is my thirteenth year. That's unheard of. When, when I started here, there wasn't an open county employment position, almost never. And when there did, when there was a position that came up, we would have forty, fifty, or more applications for one position. Not all of them qualified applicants, but many of them qualified applicants. Now, we have five vacancies, five or six vacancies between court and law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, and another four or five in the county, so we have at least ten vacancies. Jennifer Wood was just able to fill the front-of-the-court referee vacancy position, I think, this month, so that's one less. We need this position to be reclassified so we can properly address the added responsibilities of the position and bring it into parity with the other grade four court administrator position. These are difficult economic times, but in order to attract and retain qualified employees, it's vitally important that we properly and fairly compensate the position that we're seeking to fill so we can keep good employees and managers. It's not just attracting and hiring somebody. It's retaining them. It's keeping them here. It's getting them committed to our organization and to further our organization more than just padding a resume or passing through. My hat's off to Administrator Cordes. She's been a backbone of Grashaw County since you guys hired her. It was the best thing that you did for Grashaw County because she hasn't just passed through. She's hired Chris Osterhoff. She's done things that have solidified this organization on a professional level, thanks to the board and your insight. And she's continued to support us in our efforts to do that, and I think that comes from her extensive knowledge of court operations and court administration in her prior careers. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. And if Jennifer, if they're too tough, I'll throw them over to Jennifer, so. I do want to recognize also that my fellow judges, our chief judge, Lisa Sullivan, our two new circuit judges, Judge Barkman and Judge Slagel, my benchmate Judge Barker, who's here, and our sheriff, Sheriff Morris, and Grashaw County Prosecutor Keith Cushion, all wrote letters of support. Not because I twisted their arm, not because I bribed them. I didn't promise to pay them anything. I think they really recognize the fact that we work hard together, law enforcement, the prosecutor's office, the court system, that we're trying to be collaborative. We continue to try to find ways to save costs for the county to operate on budgets that are reasonable but prudent and are protective of the taxpayers' revenue. We've always tried to do that. We're going to try to continue to do that. And if you approve this request, I can assure you that we'll be better equipped to continue to do that in the future, so, thank you. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Your Honor, now, is this, this is an open position? Is there someone on staff? Or how do you, how do you plan on filling the position?
This is an open position, and I'm going to, you know, depending on the board's action tonight, I'm going to consult with Tracy and with Sheila about, and Jennifer, of course, going forward. But we have posted, we have advertised, we've done that inside the county and outside and on the scale, state website, and with Indeed, et cetera. And I'm chagrined to report that I've received a total of three applications. That's it. Of those applications, I feel currently we have two qualified candidates. And, but whether I would go back to the drawing board with the revised position and re-advertise and try to, you know, try to generate additional interest and see what other options are out there, I'll take that counsel from Administrator Cordes and from Jennifer Wood. I'm happy to do that. I don't want to drag my feet too much longer because I've got to get somebody in the position, and then they've got to get up to speed, and they've got to help us going forward, especially in light of the audit. So, but even if I moved on either of the two qualified candidates that I feel we have from the three resumes and applications, it would probably be middle to end of November before we could have somebody in place.
Do you feel that if the board were to allow you to go to step four and then re-advertise them, you might get some even more qualified candidate?
We could, we could. I mean, you know, salary is, I'm sure Tracy would confirm this, but salary is always, always the, you know, sticking point of negotiations. And as she pointed out, we do advertise salary. And so, somebody might not apply when they look at a salary that they just don't feel is going to be negotiable or they feel is too low for the, for the position. And there's a, there's a current district court administrator position opening in Grand Traverse County that's paying substantially more than this. And some people want to go to Grand Traverse County and work rather than come to Grashaw County. I don't understand that myself. Being a lifelong resident of Grashaw County, I, I live right here. But we are competing statewide. It's not just competing with Moncomp County or Clinton County or Midland County or Isabella County.
You said that we're nine positions short. What about the other nine? Or you said ten, but what about the other nine?
Well, when I say nine positions short, I'm reading from, this was Human Resource Reporting for September about projects and staffing, et cetera. So, we have a hundred and thirty-seven full-time employees in Grashaw County, and she had vacancies in September, and we have the following vacancies listed. District Court Administrator, Attorney Referee, Front-of-the-Court Clerk, Court Recorder and Assignment Clerk in Circuit Court, Deputy Treasurer, Caregiver Training, Commission on Aging, Site Manager, Commission on Aging, Nutrition Assistant, Commission on Aging, Road Patrol with the Sheriff, and Correction Staff with the Sheriff. So, just counting those, I counted ten.
Okay. I see what you mean. I thought you meant like more on just the court.
Oh, no, 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 we don't have. But of those 10, five of them direct are in the court system and five are in the county government system.
All right. Any other questions?
Sam, you got something? Judge, in my packet, I see where Sheila sent us this range, grade four salary range, maybe six to 104. But I see this other thing that was sent out with the classifications for the department heads. And so do you guys have a different scale? Is not in the same department head, or how does that work?
No, Sam, that, that's the, that's the schedule that I, I'm referencing. So it says department head salary schedule, says effective 10/1/2021. And then that's the pay grade, and it goes one through seven. And then it goes step one through six, and then it lists all those. And then over on the right gives you the pay grades and the titles. So those are the respective positions under those respective pay grades.
So, but when I look at that schedule, I mean, I look at that schedule, and really, our schedule must just, at a pay grade four, it's $73,000, it says there in that schedule, 7357.
Right, that'd be the pay grade four at a step six. So pay grade four, step one starts at $60,000, $48 annually. And then the highest step would be step six at 73057.
So my question is really, where do we come to the 88 that Sheila had talked about?
It's a different.
If I could, she.
I was just asking, is there a different schedule?
Yeah. No, Sheila included the fringe benefits in her costs.
So she adds the salary.
Has that and the salary.
She has the salary plus the fringe benefits because that's, of course, a cost to the county.
So that's, we got like, we got $27,000, $28,000 fringe benefits, sir?
She's estimating if, if we're at the top end with the fringe benefits.
Yeah, the bags, right?
Yeah.
All right. That's, that's all I wanted to know. I just, I was looking for those numbers and I couldn't find them where they are.
Tracy, is that accurate? I don't want to misstate.
Yeah, that's right. I can see how the question arises, Sam. By the way, these things are labeled. But yeah, the salary number she provides calculates the full family benefits just so that you folks have in front of you the full cost of the position because salary alone is misleading.
I mean, so you got about $25,000 in benefits to get to 108,000.
Easily, easily, yeah.
All right. That's all I wanted to know. I was just looking for two same numbers, that's all.
But it would only be at that number if it was a full family put on the plan.
Correct. Yeah, she kept, my understanding was Sheila calculated the highest cost. And then, of course, if it was a single person plan, or if it was a husband or wife, if it's a full family plan, include children or dependents, or husband or wife would be, or couple would be two, and then it goes down to an individual, one.
All righty.
They are, at level three, they're the same as they would be at level four, at least 100%.
Right, yeah. Sam, I, Judge Bakker just pointed out, I know she's been through this, that the benefit number would be fairly static, right, between level three and level four because that's that additional fringe benefit cost that is just based on whether it's a full family plan, a couple, or an individual health plan.
Then you have a couple bucks more for the salary for the matching retirement. That's about it. That wouldn't be much. I just thought that, I couldn't find those numbers when Sheila had them on the schedule. Okay, that's fine. Yep. I make that motion to go ahead and do that.
Okay, any further questions? I believe we're looking for a motion.
I would make a motion that we would allow district court to change the grade from grade three to grade four as presented.
I'll second that.
Does that include the second item that you want about authority to hire, one through six, you mentioned?
He can hire.
Well, yeah, but I would like the authority to be able to negotiate and hire within that full range of.
Certainly. I mean, that goes without question.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion by Bailey, a second?
I second it.
Second by Bunny? Any discussion on that motion?
Ask Clerk Callen.
We should have a roll call? All right. Angie, could you please call a roll?
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunny?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion passed. Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Okay, next up, Keegan with a portion report.
Hi. Hey, the Grashit County Equalization Department is presenting the 2021 apportionment report for review and approval. This report is a complete summary, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This report is a complete summary of the taxable value, millage rates, and special assessments levied within each township and city in Grashit County. The responsibility of the board is to prove certification and spread of these millage rates, taxable value across county. So what I'd like to do is just kind of give a brief overview of what's included in this report. I believe it starts on page 22 of your packet. And I apologize, it's fairly small writing to be able to include all this information. But on page 22, this is an overview of the county, townships, cities, and villages. And starting from left to right, it shows the unit of government, then the taxable value of that unit, the allocated millage rates of that unit. The next column is the estimated tax dollars that these millage rates will bring in. Then it adds on the extra voted millage rates, and then again, the estimated tax dollars for those. The next two columns are the debts, if levied, then the debt tax dollars. And then the second to last column is the total estimated tax dollars that the millage rates will be bringing in. And then the last column is the total of the Renaissance homes. Feel free to stop me at any time with questions or if I'm going too fast or anything like that.
Keegan, I just had a question. Do you have anything in here that says like different townships went up or down in values? I mean, do you have like an upper, you know, like in a spreadsheet, you have, you know, up, $200 or down $200?
So I do not have it included in this report, but that's something that the board is interested in. I could absolutely present that. I do include in our equalization reports in April, a overview of the tax dollars each year and the amount that they're increasing or decreasing, along with the total value of each township and jurisdiction, the increase in value or decrease in value.
You know, that's fine. I knew we seen it before, and I just probably wasn't on this formals on the other one. That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Page 23, this is an overview of the authorities. You have the DDA in Alma, and then the St. Louis, Ithaca, Pine River Transit Authority. And then this is the same information as on page 22, the taxable value, the millage rates, tax dollars that'll generate. Page 24 with the extremely small text, these are all of the school districts, along with the tax dollars they will be bringing in. Page 25 is for Montcalm Community College, along with the intermediate school districts. Page 26 is a, gives the total property tax rate for the homesteads, the non-homesteads, the homestead with special assessments, and the non-homestead with special assessments. So if anybody was looking to calculate what their taxes are going to be for the year, age they would use, they would look up their school district, and then which rate would apply to their property. And the last rate, or last page lists the special assessments in Grashit County. Looks like there's one in Village of Ashley, Elba Township, Washington Township, and the city of St. Louis. And I believe that's it.
Questions for Keegan?
Well, Keegan, I understand that this is a tremendous amount of work and a lot of numbers.
Yeah, and if you'd like, I can give kind of a brief overview of what all goes.
That would be good.
Yeah, absolutely. So this report starts in May. What we do at the Equalization Department is we complete a form called the Millage Reduction Fraction Computation Form, or the L4028. So what this form does is it takes the previous year's taxable value, it includes the losses for the year, the additions for the year, and then it gives the total taxable value for this year. And what that does is calculate the millage reduction fraction for each unit of government. Basically, the purpose of a reduction fraction is that it makes sure that the taxpayers are not paying more than the annual rate of inflation. So if this form determines that for a unit of government that the overall annual growth of that unit of government was higher than the rate of inflation, this reduction fraction is going to be placed upon the millage rates to make sure that the citizens aren't paying more taxes than the rate of inflation. So once the L4028 is completed, this is sent to each unit of government, and they will use this millage reduction fraction to fill out their tax rate request form, or the L4029. This form is an overview of each millage rate that's going to be collected in each township. And so from basically like June till September, they send in these tax rate request forms to the Equalization Office. What we do is we review all of these forms. We make sure that the proper millage reduction fraction is applied, or if any reduction fraction is needed, and that no millages are expired, anything like that. And then we take those millage rates and we put them into the apportionment report, and then we present them to the board for approval. Kind of a brief overview of how this.
So what do you do in your spare time?
No, a lot. Probably go outside a little bit.
All right. Any further questions? So Keegan, are you looking for a motion of approval?
Yes, yep, please.
All righty. Motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Bunting, I heard first. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion passed.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Wonderful job. We appreciate all the work you're doing.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Good night.
Bye-bye. Okay, next, we have Chris from Michigan Works.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I am asking for, on behalf of Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works, for, of our Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works interlocal agreement. So what this agreement does is it's actually the binding document that creates the five-county consortium that is Michigan Works and what we operate under. The previous, this document that's, that's in front of you is actually an exact copy of the previous document, which we, which was approved in 2017, and is which we've been operating under for the last five years. The only difference in this document and that one is this one now expires in January of 2026, and begin, or in December of 2026, and begins in January 1st of 2022.
Okay, questions?
Well, I read the document, but I'm no lawyer, but it looks okay to me.
It actually has been, this last rendition's been reviewed by our Michigan Works attorney, as well as the state of Michigan and the Attorney General's Office. But since there's no changes, there's not really much to review.
Gotcha. Any questions, then? I look, we're looking for a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Michigan Works.
Approved.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passed. Thank you, Chris. I understand you have another meeting to run, too.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Eric, it looks like you're up with the city of Alma.
I also have Dave Ringel here to help out with some of the more deep technical points of the water main. Dave's our Public Services Director. Thanks for the opportunity to come down and request some funding from your art money. What I want to talk about is what we're calling the North State Phase One Water Main. From your, your packet, the aerial that we provided, basically it'll be about mid-center, on Center Street, tap into the water main that runs there, and run north, halfway up the block there. They'll take us to it if you're familiar with that block, basically where the cycle shop is currently located. Basically, the reason for that is twofold. One, it's funding, budgeting, and timing. And we'll talk about timing here in a second. It also gets us about three quarters of the businesses on that, on that stretch of, stretch of street. We might be missing one with that, getting to that, that point. Phase two would take that all the rest of the way and tap into Superior Street. There's a 10-inch main, and Dave will talk a little bit about that. And that will help with our redundancies there. But what's really driving this and our timing is the hotel project at 313 North State. This is currently underway, and developer, we're looking to hopefully be open February, March of this, this coming year. Obviously, we're coming in at the end of the year construction for, for getting things done. We did meet with four contractors and got some good pricing. We had, and the one that we're choosing is the low bidder that's been presented. And that's a work construction. Actually, they're all in St. Louis here locally.
What was the construction?
Ward excavation, I'm sorry. They're here in St. Louis. And their timing is good. That's the whole, that was the biggest thing when we met with these folks, all very capable companies. The timing is really the issue. They, they feel they can get this in the ground. Dave can speak more to that. In the ground in two weeks, and then we might, most likely, we'll have to wait on asphalt topping until, until spring. But we can get that done. The project is, is large for our downtown. It'll provide nine hotel units in the downtown, around our second main street, right down from the Opera Block. Additionally, it'll be eight units on the second floor with a ground full residential that we did through a conditional rezoning, which we have first of our kind in our downtown. We're looking at opening up to ground full residential, but this is the first one we've done, using the conditional zoning. The building has been classified as functionally obsolete in the city of Almede, Grand, and Oprah, absolutely property exemption to help out with the, with the project. And this board did provide a brownfield plan and did approve the bump of plan for this project. Once the developer and the contractors dug into the building, we found a lot more structural issues than what they seen when they went through the building initially, which we do in these, these types of buildings. So a lot more investment was made into structure, putting more structure underneath the, the, into the basement area to hold the building for what it needs to be. Obviously, the, the new water main's important because this is such, is such a large project, and it's multi-use. It needs fire suppression. The four inch that's on State Street right now is probably a two inch by this point. Dave can speak to that. It's probably a close to 100-year-old water main. It's probably two inches by this point. There's no way that the flows will happen there, if it's there. I'm going to let Dave talk a little bit about the long-term benefits. This will not just benefit this block. It is just a public main. So all those folks who are currently tapped into that four inch, eventually, this is where they will tap into. So it'll be there, ready for them. But I'll go ahead and let Dave talk to the long-term there.
Hello. As Eric mentioned, I'm Dave Ringel, the Public Services Director for the City of Alma. I'd like to thank Administrator Cordis for allowing us to come before you and speak tonight, Chairperson Murphy for allowing us to speak, and the rest of the board for hearing this. I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of the boring stuff and the reasons behind this. But this project, in a nutshell, came up very rapidly. This was something that we could not budget for, for this upcoming year. The project started really about spring of this year. And when they went to do their fire suppression tests, they did two consecutive fire suppression tests. The existing four-inch water main on State, State Street does not provide sufficient water flow for their fire suppression system. So we looked at a few different options. If you want to, we can talk about this, but just to fast-forward onto your sheet, if you look at the overlay of the downtown, there's a couple different options that were looked at. None of them are good because if the developer looked at putting in a six-inch line, which would. Um, because if the developer looked at putting in a six inch line, which would be the minimum that would be required. Would not be a public main, so they could have came in from the west through the parking lot. But it only would have sufficed to supply for that building. Nobody else would have had uh an option to, to connect off of that because it would have been a private main. Another option was to go up the north-south alley that is to the west of State Street. Several problems with that, um, that alley is only sixteen foot wide, there's our currently existing sanitary main. And a storm main that runs up and down that alley. For eagle permitting requirements, you have to be no closer than ten feet either side of those mains. Sixteen foot alley would run out of real estate, so you can't put a public la- public main, excuse me, down private property, you can get permission. But it's very tight, there's existing buildings there, utility poles, it's not feasible. So the next option was to look at coming down State Street for the private main. Um, if any of you are familiar with underground piping, especially in the downtown district within cities, we're running out of real estate below ground, there's only so many places to put a main. There's an existing sanitary line that runs on State Street, you have to be ten feet both sides of that. And if it's a private main that runs down that street, it's, it does no benefit to the public. Number two is, when we do run a public main down there and there will be a point in the future that it is needed. There's not much space underground, when you've got a private main, you have to stay probably, I'm gonna say seven to ten feet from underground, because you don't want to risk that blowing out. You also have to stay ten feet from that storm and sanitary line that runs under State Street. There runs out, there's, there's, there's no room, so in the future. So the idea was to talk about going jointly and having a twelve inch water main that would serve two functions. Serve the residents and all the property owners along State Street, this developer can have the, um, the potential to connect off of it. And the other one is we can connect a sixteen inch main artery line that's along Center Street, eventually up to State Street, like Eric had mentioned, to connect. Um, to that ten inch as well as a twelve inch that runs along North State Street, north of Superior Street. It's kind of a, a catch-all with this project. But the, uh, the, the issue is, there's no funding for it because this came up, so looking to try to find money out of nowhere to make this appear. Currently have a project that was slated to be on Center Street. Looking to ask the commissioners to allocate the funding that we have had on Center Street, which is a couple blocks west of this. Um, there is an aging four inch line, and if you're familiar with Alma, Center Street just east of um Lincoln Avenue. If you look at that road surface, it's swiss cheese, there's a four inch line there that is extremely problematic. That we, on one winter, we had three different water main breaks just on that section, so. That line needs to be replaced, and that one has been budgeted for. Replacing that four inch with a sixteen inch line that will help to give us added redundancy coming out of the water treatment plant. That line, that sixteen inch line feeds uh, city of St. Louis as well as the city of Alma. So we could interconnect that and we could create a triple redundancy coming out of the water treatment plant. The idea that if anything happens to any of the two other sixteens that come out of that plant, we have a triple line that can feed both cities. So, looking, coming back to State Street, looking at the reasons for this, the downtown district in the next maps will show that. This will give us an increase in public safety as well as decrease, a- and in it, decrease in future fire damages. Any of you who are familiar with the area, we've had two different fires within the last ten to fifteen years downtown Alma. One in particular, the Opera House, uh, we experienced, there is a lack of sizing of the water mains due to. Initial sizing that was placed, it was well over a hundred years ago, sufficed then, not so much now, especially with building requirements. In that event of the fire uh for the Opera House, we actually reversed the flow on the water mains because we. Actually turned the water lines into a suction, we had two different pumper trucks, one from Saint, uh, City Mount Pleasant. We actually reversed the flow on the water mains, we were pumping so hard because there's not enough um sizing in water mains downtown. Number two is age, as they deteriorate, there's several minerals, like Eric had mentioned, you can take a four inch, turn it into less than a one inch. You can take a twelve inch and you can turn it into about a four inch, just the mineral deposits that are on these things, so. Age is not kind to utility lines and water's no exception. So the increase of a twelve inch to interconnect that brings dramatic fire flow changes downtown, it adds. So if there is an event of a catastrophic fire, heaven forbid, this creates additional flow that is very much needed in the downtown district. Also be replacing a severely aged and undersized water main, we've talked about that, the existing four inch on State Street. We'd create a connection and uh the creation of a water main arterial route between Center Street and Superior Street eventually. Take into account, we call this phase one, we're not going to do the interconnect right now, we're trying to keep costs as low as possible, but eventually we will make that interconnect. When we can budget and allow for it. But this creates the beginning of that, connecting to Center Street, heading a li- just a little bit further north than half block of that. Block between State, or excuse me, Superior and Center. So we can allow for the connection between eventually between, between that sixteen inch existing and the twelve inch, which dramatically increases the flows throughout. Center of town, downtown district, as well as the city as a whole. Long-term payoff, the water main once installed could last for another hundred plus years. The idea is when we replace these, we put in ductile iron, cement lined, concrete lined. No more material buildup, we can basically set and forget these things, the idea for a hundred years. That's our standard for building water mains as well as any utilities downtown, sanitary is a little different, but water, the idea is about a hundred years. We increase the water system reliability throughout downtown, um, goes without saying, it's a newer main, less problematic. We can also keep that money that we budgeted towards Center Street on track. To replace that section that we would otherwise have to look at reallocating funds for this one, just because of the need of riding, rising as fast as it has. The other re- reason is to increase water flow and volume as well as pressure in the downtown district. Cannot reiterate this enough, that section of State Street would dramatically be improved. Gives them added pressure and volume for any kind of future expansions in the downtown. I want to reiterate that this is also the, uh, the major point of contention, this will be a public main that everybody can connect to in those, that portion of the downtown. Um, if you look at these slides and if you're, if you can follow along here, if you've got the sheets, I've got one sheet to show. Existing situation downtown, it gives you a broader view of downtown, shows where that four inch existing line is on that block. You can also look at the colors as far as the existing water mains. You'll notice on Superior Street, there's a ten inch existing, that is also well over a hundred years old. The newest baby one, I call it, is that sixteen inch. On Park Street, just plus, that's a newer line, that's a six inch, and we base these on future flows, development patterns and that sort, we're also connecting to existing lines. That's existing currently right now as we speak. Going to the next sheet, you'll see a dotted line, you'll see a line on the west portion of that block of downtown, between Center and Superior. You'll see the proposal of the twelve inch water line that we're looking at running as well as a dotted line. That dotted line indicates the future expansion after this portion would be placed. If you ask us internally, ideally, we would go from Center Street to Superior, in a perfect world, that's exactly how it would work. But because of the timing and how this came about, keeping it as cheap as possible to accommodate this need. As well as the future needs for this particular area, this is what we're asking for right now is this portion. The rest of the city could finance and budget to do that, that north half. This one is dramatically easier to do this, uh, if we go from center to just a little bit of, uh, north of halfway. We can basically connect to that six inch, six inch, uh, sixteen inch, inch water line with a live connection. We don't have to talk, uh, talk with M dot, it's also less complicated, we're just connecting and running north. Calling it a day and we're gonna interconnect to that existing four, so don't put in a dead end. With the idea and the caveat that I'm gonna put a T in there, so in the future, we can connect right off that north terminus, go right to the north. Get into the complicated stuff, where you have to get into the state trunk line, weave around other existing utilities, crossing that sanitary main. Going around the existing water line that is that four inch on the east and then abandoning that four inch line properly. Connecting everyone at that point to the twelve inch. That twelve inch main block is installed. Now, one that shows. Close up of just this portion of what we're asking for and what these dollars would allocate for. Is what I mentioned, just a little bit north of halfway, the reason I went just a little bit above halfway, that north, that, just a little bit north of halfway. Is trying to get as much bang as we can, get as many users that can connect to this thing as possible. Eric had mentioned, there is one building probably on that, would be on that southeast corner, that would not have access to connect to this. But the whole idea is to keep costs down where we need them, how we need them, right now. Eventually, the idea is, as I said, we would go northward. The next slide is gonna show you that same dotted line for the future expansion. Also show you what we're talking about doing with that interconnect with the existing four inch line to keep water flows contiguous, not creating a dead end water main. I don't like the idea of having a twelve inch dead water main, create stagnant flow, I want to keep water moving as much as I can through. This project, as we've talked about, we're looking at having it in two phases, budget constraints. Um, as mentioned, just to sum this up, this was not a city budgeted project, kinda came out of the blue. Project started, the idea is they didn't have enough fire flow, we're trying to accommodate this building, keep this project moving forward. Hence, the um, timing and why we're asking for it, they're projected to have this thing done in the winter, late winter, very early part of spring. And they cannot open up to the public or have any kind of uses until they've got proper fire. Water adequate needs for fire flows, so it cannot even be opened up to the public, can't even have a temporary occupancy permit. So that's the reason for, for asking in this time of year. Eric had mentioned, um. Trying to keep this thing as cheap as we can, we're asking for two hundred twenty-six thousand, those are the numbers that were submitted to us. There are ways that we could look at keeping it. There are some savings, but we're running out of those savings windows just because asphalt plants are probably gonna close the second week in November, so we're running up against those timelines. And we're in Michigan as well, and as nice as the weather is today, next week, we could be snow plowing, so. Weather forecasts don't show that, but if we ask for it, the idea is, once we've got approval, we could get material ordered. We've been told we could have materials within three days, so that's a good thing. And we have our permitting in place, uh, we have all of our water permits, eagle uh permits, so we're ready to hit the ground running, right ground. Uh, we would like to have it restored quickly by the end of this cal- this construction season. If not, we have provisions and that is part of the budget to where we could either fill this trench with gravel, have it open to pub, to the. Uh, public throughout the winter time and spring, till such time as they can do the final restoration. Might be done in phases, if we can get concrete back in, put the concrete base back in, put in some gravel over top, so it can go through the winter months, spring months. Final asphalt. And at this point, if there are any questions, anything I haven't talked about?
Maybe you want to have any questions?
I have heard talk of that, and I'm really happy that you're gonna do something with that street. I think it'll be really nice.
Thank you.
And then you said there's one person around the corner, within time, someday he'll connect into that too. Eventually, everything will start connecting.
Yes, we would look at connecting that and that building that I talked about on the southeast corner of Superior and State. That building right now has the option to connect to Superior Street on that ten inch. Right now, that is exactly where it looks like their water currently comes in, but they would have access to that. But in a perfect world, within the next five years, ten years, but sooner the better, we would make that interconnect at the north. Then they would have the ability to connect right to this, we don't want them crossing property lines to make their water connections.
The downtown Alma's really looking great, especially down Superior Street.
And this, this uh water flow issue for downtown is what would hold back any, any more development happening there. As with the rest of our downtowns in, in Gratchit County, without the proper water flows, you just can't meet these new requirements.
Hey, any, anyone else?
Uh, just obviously, this fits the economic portion of the American Recovery Plan. It allows us to uh, give, give funds to you be, due to that economic development portion of it. And I think that will fit quite nicely within that plan, uh, that should not be a problem.
Alrighty.
If you could uh ensure that the record reflects that this is also infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Angie.
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Are you looking for a motion?
Uh, I know, uh, I believe John was ready to make a motion, unfortunately, he's not here, so we're looking for a motion.
Channel two.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with this plan for um.
Two twenty-six.
Two twenty-six industry, and I can't talk, the L R J is, and destruction.
Infrastructure, infrastructure.
Construction, uh, for this uh town of uh Alma.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Bunting for two hundred and twenty-six thousand, approval from the American uh. Rescue Plan Funds for Infrastructure. And we need a second. A second by Commissioner Bailey. And uh, we should have roll call, you think? Uh, alright, uh, Angie, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Motion passed.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for stopping in tonight, glad we could help out. Thank you. Get on the phone in the morning. There you go.
All on the way home.
It's gonna look great.
Okay, uh, next, uh, Board of Canvassers, uh, Angie, are you gonna cover this?
Uh, we, there's two seats that have come up, that have expired. One for the Republican Party and one for the Democratic Party, we do have application, Ferris Azam is already on the Board of Canvassers. Uh, James Helms. After many years of good service for us, so the Democratic Party has issued an applicant Nancy O'Brien, I think. Did I get that name right?
You got the last name right. O'Brien.
Yeah, Nancy.
Nansky.
And she was recommended by the Democratic Chair Christie Freestone, who has a letter of recommendation.
Yeah, we have a letter in here on it, and uh, as Gratchit County Republican Chair, we would certainly support Ferris. So we're looking for a motion to appoint and reappoint on this.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunting. Uh. Sam, did you have something?
No, I just.
Okay, alright. Yo, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion passed. Very good, uh. Next up is Tracy, you've got a, a snow plowing uh agreement.
I do, Dave Ringel uh said something about snow and I would like to ensure that it does not snow all winter long. Because we have a contract ready for you to approve for snow plowing services. This is something we do every year, we send out a solicitation, we send a direct solicitation to five entities in the area that we now do this kind of work. Uh, also put a notice in the Gratchit Herald uh that ran for two full weeks. We got just one um, uh, quote and letter of interest. Uh, and frankly, we've not had a great uh luck in years past in getting a large number of quotes, but you know, one good one is all you need. We did get a quote from um Brian LaBaron. We actually used him last year, we split our, uh, our need with uh both Seaford. And with Brian LaBaron, Brian did the health department and the animal shelter parking lots for us. Uh, we just, you know, wanted to have an experience with the second vendor in case um, uh, Seaford for any reason. Uh, fell off uh as a contender for us, and indeed, Matt Seaford let us know uh earlier in the year that uh. He's cutting back on some of his business engagements, so. We used Brian last year for the two lots I mentioned, um, uh, he, he did a very good job, we had uh very good reviews, good comments. So, we recommend him with a, a great deal of comfort. The contract is there, it lists the rates, uh, we have uh plowing done after three inches um. Of snow, uh, we have weekend service for the jail lot only. Um, because that lot gets used on weekends, whereas the others do not. So, this is, other than the vendor, same uh as last year, same service, um, roughly same, same length. Um, I, I recommend and hope you will approve this contract.
Okay, any questions?
So move to approve the contract for snow plowing.
Motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the contract for snow plowing, you need a second? Second by Commissioner uh Bailey. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion passed.
Thank you, and upon approval of our uh, Commission Chair, uh, I am needing to leave the meeting at this point, so. Um, please call me if you have any questions about any of the items that come up later on the agenda. Thanks very much.
Okay, you may go without objection.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is uh Administrator's Employment Contract. Who's gonna? Who's gonna handle this?
I think.
Oh, John was going to. So it's in the packet, anybody have any questions on it?
You know, I I spoke with her about this a week or so ago, kind of went through it. Basically, she's looking at just, you know, her retirement plan and that type of thing. This year, I think she was two percent, and I think it's probably more than fair for what we're what we're getting.
She is also asking for a three-year contract instead of a one-year contract. Worked now for five years, I think it's more than fair that we allow her to do that.
I think there's some additional days off.
Yeah, it was.
This was, she's possibly talking about issues with her mother.
Yeah, she does. Question about that.
Was the reason for the request is what I understood.
How many, how many weeks does she get off now?
Chris, is that something you could answer?
Well, currently the standard time off is two days a month, so you're looking at twenty four days in a year, that's given. So a hundred and over a hundred and sixty hours. Hundred ninety-two hours is the standard for employee here a year. So I believe she was asking for an additional eighty hours, which is an additional two weeks, just.
Right now, she used to have sixty, forty, forty is eighty, so right now she gets four, and she'd get another two.
Yeah, and for two more.
Okay, if if she wants to take more time off, then she wouldn't get paid, is that what you're saying?
This would increase the paydays off, is that what you're asking, Dan?
Yeah, I wonder, like, say, say she just wants to take a week off, like she gets six weeks off. She wants to take an extra week off, would she get, she couldn't get paid for that week, right?
Not unless we increase it from, I, I, tell me again what she has, I didn't write it down.
You said a hundred and ninety-two hours?
The standard is twenty-four days off, standard is twenty-four days off, and she's asking for an additional ten. This has been something that has been in her contract, I believe, since she's been employed here.
Okay, that's nothing new?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, she done asked for it.
I have just a minute. So twenty-four days. So it's nine hundred and sixty.
No.
Hours.
Hundred ninety-two hours is twenty-four days.
Twenty-four days times eight hours is a hundred and ninety-two hours. Which you're saying is standard for all employees.
That is correct.
Chris, did she, was this changed from a one year to a three year somewhere in the last few weeks?
I have not been involved at all in her contract, so I don't know when it was changed.
George, I mean, I I thought I read this, but I missed the three-year contract.
The previous contract is in there.
No, no, but I mean, was this the original one she did, or did she change it, was it changed for three years in the last couple of weeks? Was this the first one she sent us?
No, I can't answer that.
I've got.
One in my pack, I don't.
I have old contract.
Okay.
I'm not the old one, I I just.
On page two, item three, period of one year has been crossed out in says three has been placed in.
Yep.
Commencing November first, twenty twenty-one through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Before you word that, George, she said she wanted to change it from a one year to a three year.
Right, right.
And that's what it says on this second.
She wants to, she's asking for a three-year contract. Which I think, she's put five years in here, I think, at one year at a time, and I think it's more than fair.
She also wants to carry over two hundred and forty, is that two hundred and forty hours or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's our standard limit, you can't go beyond that.
That is correct.
So would that?
Put it in her contract.
So does she get paid by what she's making now, or by the new?
Well, she would get, she, in the new contract, she would get be paying it by the new contract. Which is, but she's not asking for very much.
It's fifteen hundred dollars or something?
One hundred and some dollars. Wasn't asking much, I mean, that's, I think she wants, she's, she's trying to be fair and ask for more time off because of her mother not asking for a big pay increase.
That's what I understood.
And she's been, she's not gotten a pay increase for a bunch of years, so I think it's more than fair.
I think we did put it up a year and a half ago, wasn't it? Not much, we did, yeah, it was a couple of years ago, it was about two years ago now. So, yeah. I would just make a motion that we allow that new contract at three years. Now, your motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second?
George, I'm just George, I'm just looking at this real quick, well, I'll second it, and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, second by Commissioner Smith. Go ahead, go ahead, Sam.
You know so year two, is this specified year two in here what it'll be? So I thought she emailed this to us maybe three weeks ago.
Three weeks is a long time to me. I don't remember, Sam. She may have, I don't remember. Has something changed between what she emailed you and?
I don't know, I I I thought I looked at it pretty good, I spoke with her about it for probably a half hour, and this, this, tonight's the first I've seen three years, and maybe I missed missed it.
Well, she, I know she wanted three years, but I don't remember. I just assumed it was in the contract if she sent it to us.
But if she decides to quit, she gives us a notice of thirty days.
Everything is the same. Yep. Nothing's changed except the length of the contract. Everything else falls under the same.
I'm just trying to look through my email, I don't have any problem giving a three-year contract at all.
Okay.
Well, the other thing I had to ask too is MERS, about MERS.
Yep.
She has a 401 through MERS?
MERS 401K, yes.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Yep.
It's a four oh one, it's four oh three.
Four whatever they.
Yeah, four oh three.
It's not the old type, it's new, whatever it is. Four oh three, maybe?
It's for government and private.
Yeah.
Kind of nonprofit.
Right, nonprofits. Alright.
Okay.
Well, I highlighted a lot of stuff, but.
Sam, we got a nice picture of your phone.
Oh, I'm trying to look for an email. So I couldn't resist, sorry.
Ready to vote, or what? Sam?
Yeah, I I am, I guess.
Alright.
Jan, did you have anything further?
The only thing I would have liked to have seen is just go one year this year for next year.
That comes into an election year, and then I don't think you can.
Oh, you can't?
This is not, this is a non-election year, that's when you can move the contract for an administrator, county administrator, it's by law.
Okay.
Yep.
Hey, anything else? Then Angie, can you please call the roll on this?
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Motion passed. Okay. We are up to the regular financial meeting.
No, unfinished business.
Oh, alright, I'm sorry, George, you're right, yeah, no, I won't forget you. We're on to unfinished business, George has something?
Yeah. I want to bring up the fact that last meeting, the City of Ithaca could come in here with a very sound proposal. It met all the ARP requirements, there was some discussion, they were asking for a lot of money, one point five million. And by talking to the Ithaca City Manager, Jamie Khan, I asked him some questions. And he was very frank with me, and he just said that, told me, he said, you know, I'd really like to get started this fall because of the health and safety of our constituents. And if we can get started this fall with with some money, and then we can carry it over into spring and just keep, see, because the question came up, is the state of Michigan going to give us any money? We don't know that. So I propose, and I'll make a motion, that we allow the City of Ithaca to have five hundred thousand dollars to, you know, for their project out of the ARP money.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bailey, we have a second?
I support that, but I want to, I want to talk a little bit about some stuff.
Okay, it's been second by Commissioner Smith to put it on the floor, go ahead.
I have a hard time with spending this money, and and I did go around this past couple of weeks. And I talked to some townships that that really have some projects, I talked to some villages. And and some people are thinking that villages didn't get these funds. Well, they did, the Village of Perrington got less than forty-nine thousand dollars, right around that number. Ashley got about fifty-two thousand dollars, and the Village of Breckridge got about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of ARP money. And so I still believe that we need to spread this money or give them an opportunity to do this. And I chatted with Tracy about this, and I didn't know if she's not, why she's not, if she's not gonna come back or whatever, but my thought was, is to have, we all can't get together unless we have a commission meeting. My thought was to have a public hearing. Invite these townships and villages in, and see what they have ready to go. And by me just talking to a couple of places, I talked to the Village of Ashley. They have an opportunity to get a dollar store on that two hundred acres they bought out, they have fifty-seven, they have underwater and sewer too. You know, they could have a dollar store. I talked to the Village of Perrington, they got forty-nine thousand dollars, they got some problems with the lagoons, they may have to build a new lagoon. And they got to paint their water towers mandated, they probably won't get that done for forty-nine thousand dollars. And Breckridge has a lot of projects in the books, that I talked to the clerk there. And so I'm proposing, and and maybe not to tie this up with this, but I don't we talked about a formula and trying to come up with a formula about distributing these funds. And if a township doesn't come to this meeting, or a senator representative, then their money stays in the kitty. You know, but I think we need to, and I talked to Tracy about sending letters out, she was gonna talk to old Kevin Beeson, and and maybe doing this either at the courthouse or doing this, but we'd have to have it a public hearing so we could all get together, talk with them. Because we just can't go to a meeting and all of us show up. And I believe that we can work out some formula to offer these folks some money if they have a ready project for some infrastructure. And if they don't, you know, they're not gonna be able to spend some of their money, you know, when you look at North Shave, they don't, they don't have any infrastructure there, I'm not sure what they'll end up doing with that bucks. You know, but I think our funds come from everybody in the county, and I think we ought to give everybody the opportunity to get some of that back. From the small towns that are incorporated to Elma, to Ithaca, to St. Louis. And so I I want to, I don't want to really tie this up, I don't have a problem with giving these guys this money, but because I've been working on a formula. And it fits within this formula. And so I believe that if if, you know, we give these guys this money, I'd like to have Tracy go forward with setting up a meeting with the townships and the three villages in our county, talking about ARP funds. And so.
I think that's a great idea, Sam, I support a hundred percent on that one, because it's very difficult, it's very difficult for for the smaller entities especially to really comprehend what what's going on. I know the City of Ithaca is into this lead pipe project, already committed to their two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that they got for ARP money, so there's a big commitment on their part to 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 also go into this situation.
I I've been working on a formula, really, and I chatted with Tracy about it, we've kind of talked about it. Just a matter, because we all can't get together, but I think we could do this at a, in a public hearings. And maybe we could get that information out to you guys before that, but I just think that we need to try to get somebody in here and make sure everybody knows about it, all your townships know about it, all your villages know about it. And make it a point of this, the clerk candidate, or whoever runs the supervisor, senator representative. And I just think we ought to do that, and try to get it done maybe next month before the holidays.
I would, I would, I would more than be happy to to go along with that. I might even think that we might change venue, in other words, we might go out to something like the R E S D, something big. So that we have, we don't have enough room here, obviously.
No, we wouldn't have enough room here, we'd have to go someplace.
We're gonna try to, and and also, in all fairness fairness to a lot of the township supervisors, they are farmers. And they're working right now, so.
We're wrapping up, and I think if you give them, you know, another.
After November fifteenth, I think most of them will be done, hopefully, if it doesn't rain anymore, I think that's the big problem.
But I mean, they could send representatives, five or six, I never really.
Yeah, yeah. Good.
Alrighty. Any further discussion? I don't have a problem with that proposal either, you might even even invite some nonprofits.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Alrighty.
Like we're.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve five hundred thousand dollars of ARP money for the Ithaca Water Infrastructure.
I'll second that.
Okay, I think we already had a set, Sam already. It's on the floor, so when you're ready, Angie, if, no further discussion, if you call a roll.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here, yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Motion passed.
On behalf of the city, thank you.
So Sam wants her to try to set a public meeting, what if we go the Tuesday in between our regular meetings in November, so that?
The ninth, that would be before deer season, but the farmers might not be done.
Well.
I think they consider the representative.
Yeah, they they don't have to come themselves per se, they can send their clerk. Or, you know, a lot of the clerks are trustees, somebody can come.
You're gonna have to have it later in the evening anyway.
Yeah, and we'd have it at six o'clock probably. Make sure, you know, everybody could get there.
Okay, eh, but everyone agree with you say the ninth at six o'clock? And probably have to move to the R E S D?
Well, all we're gonna have is that, the second week, there's a lot of township meetings.
There is.
Also, we used to have it up in the courtroom years ago, I mean.
I'm sorry, that's a.
Would the other day of the week be good, or?
It's the tenth, Wednesday. Most, I don't think there's any township meetings on Wednesday. I think they're all on Mondays and Tuesdays.
I went to Seville's last week.
Seville's on Wednesday, yeah. See, and that's gonna be a problem too.
That's the second Wednesday is theirs, yeah.
On a Monday.
Well, township meetings are Monday too, there's a lot of them on Monday.
About Saturday.
There's none the first, what if we had it right after? No, we can't.
What, what, yeah, what would be, what would happen if we had it? We got a meeting come up in two weeks, right? On the Tuesday?
Yes.
Alright, why don't we pop on the following day, Wednesday evening at six o'clock at R E S D?
So what's that date?
November third.
November third.
Got a motion or do we need one or just agree with?
Well, let's agree to set it up and see what happens.
Let's, any, any objections to that date and time? No. Okay, let's go ahead then.
Okay.
Alright, uh, anybody need a short break or can we go right into financial?
I think you're going to have a little meeting, so. That's finance. You got it.
Alrighty. Chris, I'm going to depend on you mostly running this meeting for the financial side.
Get us into it and I can do that for you.
All right. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to, uh, a motion by Commissioner Bailey, second. To go to, uh, second by Commissioner Smith to move to the financial meeting. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Okay, we're into the finance meeting.
Okay, well, it's going to be a pretty basic finance meeting, so. Fortunately, I did meet with John on Monday morning and I was able to share with him all of the material, so he is up to date with this information too. First presentation, we have the cash balances for the end of September. The numbers at the end of September, which is our fiscal year end close, are constantly moving. They're still moving today. And I'll get into that a little bit more. I wrote a little, a little memo to help get my thoughts down on paper so that you could see them in bullet point form too. One thing that pops out to you here is what you you see is the general fund cash balance from August to September jumping from 4.3 million to 8.7 million dollars. The primary factor for that, and I did look this up, was each of the turbine farms paid their personal property tax in September. So you're looking at about 3.2 to 3.4 million dollars that came in specific related to wind, windmill. Tax money in the general fund there. Like my memo says, revenues are still going to go up. For, for in our books, expenditures will still go up. We will transfer monies around that are necessary to be transferred at the end of the fiscal year. I'll give you an example of that. Uh, one of the funds that is partially funded by the general fund is friend of the court. Uh, we pay, the general fund pays somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% of the expenses. The rest of it is a state grant. So what I do is I'll wait until the state grant reimburses the most that they'll reimburse. And then in October, I'll transfer money from the general fund to friend of the court to cover the rest of it. That way I'm not transferring too much or I'm not transferring too little. I'm doing it once. But when I do that in our system, I will date it for September. So when we run a report, it will affect our September reports. You know, you will see that cash balance moving around a little bit until we finally do close the books. Overall, I do expect to see an approximate 1.5 million dollar surplus in our general fund for last fiscal year. Once everything does settle down. A couple of reasons for that, we, you know, we deferred a $300,000 payment that we budgeted last year for our OPEB trust fund. Uh, you guys talked about how that will be deposited into OPEB at our last meeting. So that increases our surplus of few items that ARP funds were able to to shoulder the cost due to COVID expenses. Um, and then overall, we did collect a higher amount of taxes primarily related to turbine tax collection than what we were budgeted for at the beginning of the year, which will make up for the majority of that surplus. Does anybody have any questions related to cash balances? Or what I, what I, what I touched on there? All right, I'm going to move on to the September check register. Give you a moment to look that over. We had three voids for the month. One of them was to Greater Grashit for $100,000. That was simply because that ACH payment put us over our daily limit for what our, our, our bank is set up to do for ACH. So we simply avoided that. Uploaded the rest of the ACH batch and then made the ACH payment to Greater Grashit the next day. I'll give you a moment to look through those. And Commissioner Murphy, if you don't mind, when we feel it's safe to move on to the next report, please let me know.
Alrighty. Any questions on the expenditure report? Ready to move on to? Alright, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Okay, and then the last report that I have here of our standardized reports is the revenue and expenditure report. A highlight here uh, under our general fund, our total revenues, total expenditures, amount remaining in budget. The $347,000 in red for revenues means we went over budget, so we collected about about 347,000 more than expected. Um, and our expenditures are at 1.4 million under budget. And again, that is going to be that adjusting going forward. We closed the books at the end of December. Um, and that will be the last time that any accounts payable will be booked back to the prior fiscal year. Just an example of why that does move. Um, an, an easy example is utilities. You know, we get billed in October for September's electricity and gas bill from consumers. So after our fiscal year end, we get a bill for activity from our prior fiscal year. So that's going to, in, in our system, that's going to increase our expenditures on our books, even though we didn't get billed for it until a month later. The, the roof on the courthouse that's being fixed right now, we haven't been billed for that. But 80% of the work was done last fiscal year, so when we do get billed for it, I have to move that expense back to last fiscal year. So just a couple of examples of why this is going to continue moving. Does anybody have any questions related to this revenue and expenditure report?
Chris, just, just a, how do we miss GIS so much? Is it, is they update that thing like every few years or is that like?
Okay, this is, at the time that I ran this report, I have not entered the budget amendments that you approved last month.
Okay.
So we've covered this GIS a couple of times and I'll just refresh you real quick. It's, um, they started, they, they went through and did the aerial photography project. Again, they updated the system significantly. They were supposed to do it not this calendar year. They were supposed to do it last calendar year. And the project escalated because of COVID.
Okay.
And so we budgeted for it the last time and the project got charged to us this time.
I see, okay. If I asked you that before, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
At least I'm watching.
So Chris, when will they fly over again? Is it every five years?
Yeah, it's every five years is when they update the photography.
But they were a year late, so it's probably going to be four years?
That's, uh, you know, I, I'm not able to answer that question.
Okay, good question.
Yeah.
But they do have a board and I do know Tracy sits on that board, so. And then if you don't have any more questions, when you're ready, um, we can go ahead and turn it over for the treasurer's report. Um, Commissioner Murphy, if you want to let Terry know when she can fire away.
Alrighty, September's receipt distribution report. Are you? Getting ready to go into this?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Terry.
Hi. Uh, the investments haven't changed since last month, but I was not at the meeting last month because I was at conference. So if anybody has any questions or did have then, I would be glad to answer them. Nothing? Okay. Uh, next then is the receipt distribution report of the monies that we received in, in Nov- or in November, in September. Um, are there any questions on that? Okay. The transfer report for September is a lot shorter than usual, and that's because Commercial Bank has introduced a new uh, online banking platform. History from the old platform is being added all the time, but it was not available at the time that I printed this report. I do have all the transfer confirmations that were done in September in my office and you're welcome to stop by and take a look if you need. What?
Hey, Terry, um, on page 16, you have Chemical Bank. It's Huntington Bank now.
Chemical Bank and Huntington Bank?
Yeah.
That sold to TFC and then Huntington bought TFC.
That's changed twice this year.
Yes. So this is commercial, Dan. This is the commercial transfers?
No, that's what I saw was.
She's looking on the disbursement list.
Okay.
I'm looking at page 16. I meant to catch you on that, but I didn't.
Okay. I don't know what it is for sure you're looking at, Dan. I can't.
I'm looking at September 2020.
You're looking, she's on the investment page and you've.
Oh, okay, alright.
Chemical Bank and it's not anymore.
Right, okay. TCF is what it says, but I'll have to change that to.
Yeah, and Huntington just, just took it over.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll make sure, make sure to make that change.
Okay.
I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Terry?
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you much.
Well, thanks, Terry.
All right. There's something next in the file from Chris. Are, are you?
Yeah, I've got a couple more things for you.
Okay.
I just wanted to go back to my fiscal year end memo. There was something in there that I hadn't brought up that I, I want to bring to the board's attention. Um, we did talk about, I'm expecting approximately 1.5 million surplus for last fiscal year, but there was one expense that rose significantly that I wanted to talk about, and that is uh, last year was the last, is the last year that Grashit County is going to self-fund their OPEB expenses. And that is the post-employment benefits, the healthcare and the life insurance for our retirees. Our current fiscal year, we're going to fund those using our OPEB trust fund rather than, uh, using chargebacks to our individual departments. So when I was putting together the expenses for last year that were related to the, this healthcare. Usually what we, what I've seen in the last three to four years, it's run somewhere between 250 to $350,000. In this last year, it ran a little bit over $600,000. Um, so we saw the healthcare expenses for our retirees double from what we were expecting. And we'll keep an eye on that going forward. With the new funding mechanism through the OPEB trust fund that MERS is holding, we will make requests from MERS for funds to pay this on a quarterly basis. So what I would like to do, what I will do is when I make that request, I will report to the board how much I'm requesting and how much we had in expenditures for the previous quarter. So that we can watch this a little bit closer going forward. That, uh, ends what I'd like to share there and other financial business under D1, the fiscal year end narrative. Um, if you don't have any questions, I'm going to go ahead and move to D2, which is Central Dispatch 911 Budget Amendment. I'm going to share my screen for that. Central Dispatch, um, I wasn't able to confer with Dan Morton when I submitted his budget to the board, um, in September uh, for various reasons, for vacations and, uh, schedules just conflicting. So what I did was I budgeted out. This is the suggested, the suggested budget is what was, what was approved by the board. The department suggestion is what Dan is asking me to bring back to the board tonight uh, to pass as a budget amendment. So what you see, what you'll see is the revenues increased by $3,700 and the expenditures increased by $3,700. And that $3,700 is due to these reimbursement line items. The reimbursements is for the e-ticket system. Local municipalities in Grashit County reimburse, uh, 911 for e-tickets. It's important to have that budgeted in there because if you remember, three years ago, we had an audit from the state. And they were, um, made us repay a whole bunch of money to 911 because they were paying for the e-ticket systems for years and years and years and it's ineligible expense. The other thing you'll see is while the salaries and information or salary expenses stay the same, Dan and, and his board shuffled around expenditures between some of the line items. For example, buildings maintenance dropped 2,000. Uh, contingency went up 40,000. Capital expenditures went down 45,000. So the overall budget is only increasing by 3,000, but there's a lot of movement in between the line items. And the authorization for the finance director to move stuff between line items is capped when it's, uh, at $20,000 within a fund. And these are more than $20,000. So I'm bringing this to you to pass as a budget amendment. And like I said, it's because I put together a budget without Dan being able to input it due to our, our, our schedules conflicting. Does anybody have question related to that? And I believe.
Alright, I mean, he's just moved that money around. That looks like it's going to fit right in there where it's supposed to?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I'd make that motion for the minimum budget. Oh, can't do it here.
Correct.
Yeah. Alright, anything else you have, Chris?
No, that would conclude my presentation for the evening.
Okay, any further questions? I entertain a motion to go back into regular session. Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Bunty. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion passed. We're back in regular session. I believe we need a motion for this budget amendment. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? Uh, we probably should have a roll call on this. This is for the, uh,
911.
911. 911 budget.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes, motion passed. All right, uh, any.
I'll make a motion that we approve the September expenditure.
Oh, okay, very good. The motion to approve the expenditure report. Or by Commissioner Bailey, support by Commissioner Smith. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. And uh, any additional public comment?
Just want to thank the commissioners for their support on the Ithaca project tonight.
And Elma, thanks for the, you know, tech movement on that. Alrighty, without objection, we're adjourned.